Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 25, 2022 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like to give a brief safety announcement. If for some reason during the council meeting, an emergency should arise, we ask that you please leave the council chambers in an orderly manner, make a left-hand turn, go to the end of the hall, and then down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, make a left-hand turn, go to the end of the hall, and then a right-hand turn to the end of the hall, and go down those stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and it will be provided to you. Please rise now and join me in the pledge to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is Dr. Washington here? All right, Dr. Washington was to do the invocation, but since she is not here, please join me in a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Mr. Mayor, we have some presentations.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, neighbors, good evening. So, for the last six, six or seven years, six years, the last six years, we have had a city awards program. That program has had three categories of award. Those awards have typically been given at the time of our holiday gathering, our holiday party, which has also been going on for six years, would have been seven if it weren't for that pandemic thing. And the award categories are for exemplary service by a city employee. Exemplary service means going above and beyond the expectations of job description. The second category is for valor. Those are awards that are given for those that risk life safety, or risk life and limb to go above and beyond. And the third is for similar examples, but for citizens, so non-city employees, and it's a citizen service award. And because we, again, weren't able to have our holiday gathering this year, we've given some of those awards at the recent all-city staff gathering, but I have some that I'd like to give tonight for those who couldn't be at the all-staff gathering and for our citizen service awards. So, I'm going to start with our citizen service awards. So, I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to ask him to come up here. This is a mayor's award for citizen service, and this is awarded for exceptionally meritorious service to the city of Salisbury. And this is awarded to Mr. John Noor. Is John here? John, hey, would you come up here? So, by the way, if John isn't a familiar face to you, and he probably is, John is also the owner of Southern Boys Concepts, and which includes multiple restaurants, including restaurants in Salisbury, and our beloved brewery, Evolution Craft Brewing. So, this is awarded to Mr. Noor for his noteworthy actions on August 27, 2021, where he exhibited service beyond the normal expectations of any citizen. While going about his day, Mr. Noor was made aware of a motor vehicle accident on Eastern Shore Drive. The vehicle had hit a fire hydrant and landed on its side. Quick-thinking, courageous action, and compassion for others led Mr. Noor to attend to the accident site until EMS arrived on the scene. His actions are exemplary of the highest expectations of a citizen of Salisbury. John Noor. Okay, okay, you want to hang out for a second? Okay, all right. The next mayor's award for citizen service goes to Jack Heath. Jack, would you come up here, please? This is awarded for exceptionally meritorious service to the city of Salisbury. Mr. Heath's noteworthy actions on August 27, 2021 exhibited service beyond the normal expectations of any citizen. While going about his day, Mr. Heath came upon a motor vehicle accident on Eastern Shore Drive. The vehicle had hit a fire hydrant and landed on its side. His quick-thinking, courageous action, and compassion for others led him to leap into action and help the occupant escape from the vehicle before EMS arrived on the scene. Mr. Heath's actions are exemplary of the highest expectations of a citizen of Salisbury.
Okay, just to set the record straight, I watched this accident. It happened in slow motion. It was crazy. And I ran over there, and then Superman here pulls up behind and takes charge. I was just his humble assistant during this thing. He pulled out a knife, cut the guy out of his seatbelt. I was just holding him up and trying to talk to the guy. So, he was the real hero that day, but we were a good team.
Thank you very much. John's understating himself. I could have never lifted the guy out, but I really appreciate this. Thank you very much.
If you didn't know, Jack Heath is also a firefighter, so it probably came firsthand. So, the next award is a mayor's award for exemplary service, and this goes to Will White. Where's Will? Come on up here, Will. So, this is for exemplary service to the city of Salisbury through his management of the Active Transportation Plan Workshop grant pursuit Fitzwater plantings, for which he arranged a planting day with the bicycle committee. When COVID worsened, Will was deployed, as he has been before, with the Army National Guard. In spite of his deployment, and with a newborn baby, Will continued to come to work regularly and stay engaged in meetings. Will's commitment to ethical, honorable service beyond his job description is exemplary of the highest expectations of any employee of the city of Salisbury. I'd like to ask Shanita Lewis-Watson and Paul Byington to come forward, and Christine Chestnut. These awards are given for exemplary service to the city of Salisbury. On November 11, 2021, Shanita, Paul, and Christine responded to after-hours calls from Pemberton Manor, in which the resident advised that they were without running water. Code enforcement teams Shanita and Paul issued an order of condemnation on buildings 1011, 1013, and 1015 for lack of running water, and as a result, management had 48 hours to correct the issue to avoid a vacate order. As employees of the complex were sent to secure four gallons of water for each resident, Shanita, Paul went to the common area of the units to speak with concerned residents to reassure them the issue was being addressed and that progress was being made. Even after being advised that they were free to leave, they remained on-site well into the evening, delivering water to each of the 33 units of the residents of each of the building. Their commitment to ethical, honorable service beyond their job descriptions is exemplary of the highest expectations of any employee of the city of Salisbury. Yes. Chris. How you doing? Beard looks good. Come on in. Good, how are you? All right, this is the mayor's award for exemplary service to Police Officer Christopher Sipple for exemplary service to the city of Salisbury. On Halloween, Officer Sipple came across a family sleeping in their car. They had been in the car since a house fire the previous February. Though he tried to connect the family to homelessness resources, due to it being the weekend, there was nothing available. Officer Sipple took it upon himself to pay for three nights in a hotel for the family and purchase a gift card for over $100 so that they could buy food. His commitment to ethical and honorable service beyond his job description is exemplary of the highest expectations of any employee of the city of Salisbury. It's Master Police Officer Donna DeBosse here. This is the mayor's award for exemplary service to Master Police Officer Donna DeBosse for exemplary service to the city of Salisbury. On 1 February 2022, MPO Donna DeBosse and PFC Anthony Gutierrez met with an elderly female while conducting a welfare check after friends reported not seeing her for several days. When they made contact, they found her residence unlivable due to trash and waste littered through the entire house. The floors were covered in inches of rotting trash and other things. City code enforcement officers responded to assist, and the officers offered to assist and spent the remainder of the day cleaning the house. Over the next two weeks, they continued, of their own avail, to help clean, maintain contact, and connect her to Resources through Habitat for Humanity. They hired Stanley Steamer to come clean the floors and carpets once the trash was removed. The officers planned to continue to provide assistance cleaning cabinets, appliances, and dishes. Master Police Officer DeBosse's commitment to ethical, honorable service beyond her job description is exemplary of the highest expectations of any employee of the city of Salisbury. This is the mayor's award for exemplary service to Police Officer Devin Fairman for exemplary service to the city of Salisbury. To reduce the amount of litter in the city, Police Officer Fairman spoke up and recommended to his supervisor that the new, brand-new COPP unit could help to pick up litter and simultaneously build trust among our citizens in our neighborhoods. He and his team, led by Corporal Foy, participated in a community cleanup. Although the neighborhoods included in the cleanup, some of them were outside of the city, residents expressed their appreciation to city officers for being of assistance. Through his actions, Police Officer Fairman represents not only leadership, but the highest standards of community service. His commitment to ethical, honorable service beyond his job description are exemplary of the highest expectations of any employee of the city of Salisbury. Can we have another round of applause for our citizens and employees?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a prime example of what we always say about the citizens of Salisbury and Wycomico County, and that is they're our greatest asset, and we thank the officers and everybody that was involved. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the April 4, 2022 Work Session Minutes, the April 11, 2022 Council Meeting Minutes, Resolution Number 3164, approving the appointment of Mike Angelo to the Sustainability Advisory Committee, Green Team, for term ending April 2025, and Resolution Number 3165, approving the appointment of Teresa Thaxton to the Human Race Advisory Committee for term ending March 2024. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Nichols. Questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. Is Mr. Angelot here today? And Teresa? Please stand up. Thank you very much for volunteering. We appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
A second.
Mr. Boda? I think I heard Mrs. Gregory.
Yeah.
I got you. This is Miller. Good evening.
Good evening, council. The Department of Procurement seeks approval of city council to award two competitively bid procurements and one Tier Six change order. The first item is number ITB 22-103. It's the wastewater treatment plant BioSolids Dump Truck. Here, we're looking to piggyback on a cooperative contract from Sourcewell, contract number It's for a 2024 International Cabin Chassis with a Godwin Aluminum 20-Foot Dump Body. Cost is $198,930. It is funded from the five different GLs noted in your packet. Per the Salisbury Charter, Section SC 16-3, Number 9, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, Contracts in Which the City Receives a Contract Price Negotiated by the State, County, or Other Governmental Entity Pursued to a Valid Contract. So, Sourcewell, you're familiar with that entity. They're a service cooperative created by the Minnesota Legislature as a local unit of government. All products offered through Sourcewell have been competitively bid by government employees. And then that's made possible to be extended to us through an inter-local agreement with Sourcewell. We've been a member of Sourcewell for many, many years.
Any questions about the dump truck? Please do not ask what BioSolids are.
Like a presser question?
Yes, very similar.
Just know they're being handled.
Okay.
Awesome. All right, the next item is in reference to RFP Request for Proposal Number 20-103. That initial contract was the Laboratory Information Management System. We're looking for approval of change order number four. This was for the Department of Water Works. This is a contract change which includes seven additional months of project management. The total amount of the change order is only $9,800, but if you remember, a couple years ago, we put in place a tiered system of change order approvals. This is the highest level of change order, which we come to council now for those particular change orders.
Questions from the council? Okay.
Awesome. And the last item is Request for Proposal Number A-22-107. This was the Livable Community Design and Consulting Services. This was for the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The scope of work we solicited for is a citywide contract for task order design and consultant services focused on livable community, context-based design practices, architectural firms. Proposals were sent out to the public in January, January 13, to be specific. We opened proposals February 18. We did receive a total of eight proposals. Normally, in contracts like this, maybe eight vendors is a few too many. We wouldn't have enough work to go around, so we did pick the first, the top five proposals. The GL accounts, this is, the GL accounts would vary based on the project that would be assigned. We did intend this as a multi-vendor award, that we would select more than one vendor. This is an indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity contract, so we don't promise any specific amounts or any specific tasks to vendors. We're just looking to have a professional architectural team that we can call upon their services when needed. The initial contract term is for a period of one year, but then within the contract there is a renewal clause that we could extend the contract for two additional one-year terms upon mutual agreement between the city and the vendor.
Questions from the council? I do have one. How did we choose the top five? By what was the criteria?
Sure. Let me go to that. So, it's always out of 100 points. 100 points makes it easy. Let's see, we had, how many points were 60, 100?
So, it's the point total?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just looking to say.
That's all I need.
Oh, okay.
That's all I need.
I was going to break it down for you.
No, that's all I need.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. The award of bids is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
We have a couple of public hearings tonight on charter amendments, and I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve CAR 2022-1.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Mrs. Glantz?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Before you, it's Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-1, Resolution to amend SC 1-20 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury to adjust the city council's district boundaries to ensure proper apportionment of the city's population within the district boundaries. Whereas pursuant to Article 3, 4 of the Maryland Declaration of Rights, each legislative district shall consist of adjoining territory, be compact in form, and of substantially equal population, and due regard shall be given to natural boundaries and the boundaries of political subdivisions. And whereas the city, following the 2020 census and using guidance from the National Conference of State Legislatures, has established new district boundaries to ensure proper apportionment of the city's population within its five legislative districts. And whereas SC 1-20 of the city's charter governs city council districts and must be amended to establish the new district boundaries and to allow for future redistricting as the city's population and natural boundaries change and evolve.
Thank you. If there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this, or anybody on the Zoom call, please identify yourself and be sworn in by the city clerk. Anybody in the audience want to speak on this? Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, and once again, I will ask anyone that wishes to speak to identify yourself. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and announce that this will be effective on June 15, 2022. All those in favor of Resolution 2022-1, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. CAR 2022-1 is approved by a vote of five to zero. We have another charter amendment, Resolution Number 2022-2, to amend Section SC 2-1 of the Charter. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve CAR 2022-2.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glantz, please read the CAR.
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-2, a resolution to amend SC 2-1 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury to reflect the city's contemporary legislative districts. Whereas SC 2-1 of the city's charter contains language that does not reflect the contemporary representation of the city's selection and term of council members for its five legislative districts. And whereas the city has determined it is in the best interest of its citizens to amend SC 2-1 to accurately reflect the selection and terms of its council.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this amendment? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing and once again, ask if anyone wants to speak on this item. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll vote on CAR 2022-2. All those in favor of Resolution 2022-2, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. CAR 2022-2 is approved by a vote of five to zero. This change in the charter will be effective on June 15, 2022. I'll call for a motion and a second to approve CAR 2022-3.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Glantz?
Charter Amendment Resolution Number 2022-3, a resolution to amend SC 6-9 of the Charter of the City of Salisbury to reflect the city's contemporary election of mayor and council. Whereas SC 6-9 of the city's charter contains language that does not reflect the contemporary election of the mayor and council. And whereas the city has determined it is in the best interest of its citizens to amend SC 6-9 to accurately reflect the election of mayor and council for SC 6-9 to be in accord with the other sections of the charter.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. I'll ask anyone who wishes to speak on this amendment to please identify yourself. Anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak? At this time, I'll open the public hearing and once again, ask if anyone wishes to speak. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a vote on Resolution Number 2022-3 to amend Section SC 6-9. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Resolution Number 2022-3 is approved by a vote of five to zero. This resolution will be effective on June 15, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3166 to expand the number of members on the mayor's disability advisory committee. Ms. Glantz?
Resolution Number 3166, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland to expand the number of members on the mayor's disability advisory committee. Whereas on October 1, 1991, the mayor and council adopted a resolution creating the mayor's disability advisory committee. And whereas on January 13, 1997, the mayor and council adopted a resolution that the membership be expanded from five to seven members. And whereas on August 17, 2020, the mayor and council adopted a resolution that the membership be expanded from seven to nine members. And whereas the purpose of the committee is to provide advice to the mayor on ways in which accessibility to city jobs, programs, and services to people with disabilities can be improved. And whereas the work of the mayor's disability advisory committee would be enhanced if its membership was a greater diversified representation of the disabled population and people who are familiar with the challenges faced by the disabled.
I'll need a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 3166 as read.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Jackson. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3166, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Motion, Resolution Number 3166 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 3167.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Blake, Ms. Glantz?
Resolution Number 3167, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, an amended and restated land disposition agreement with Green Street Housing with Green Street Housing LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions governing the sale and redevelopment of Lot 30. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury determined there is surplus real property owned by the City of Salisbury that should be redeveloped, and furthermore, that there is a strong public need for increased infill development within the city. Whereas the city is the owner of all that certain real property identified as parking Lot 30, map 0106, grid 0017, parcels 1637, 1638, 1639, 1640, 16, all the way through 1648. Whereas on November 10, 2014, the city declared the property surplus property. Pursuant to 16-8 of the city charter, the Chapter 2.36 of the Salisbury City Code, the city has the right to offer at public sale property declared surplus and to make award thereof in the best interest of the city. Whereas city-owned surplus property should be developed not only in consideration of the highest bid price, but in consideration of the type of development proposed, and such development should require commitment from the purchaser to develop such city-owned surplus property in a manner that will raise the city's tax base and be in the best interest of the citizens of the city. Whereas in accordance with the foregoing, the city determined it is in the best interest of the citizens of the city to sell the property. Whereas the City of Salisbury advised, advertised for proposals for the purchase and redevelopment of the property. And whereas the city council selected the proposal submitted by Green Street Housing LLC as the awardee of the request for proposal, and in accordance therewithin authorized the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into that certain disposition contract dated March 31, 2016, with Green Street Housing LLC, setting forth the terms and conditions governing Green Street Housing LLC's purchase and redevelopment of the property. And whereas for various reasons, including the global COVID-19 pandemic, Green Street Housing LLC's purchase and redevelopment of the property has been delayed, and the city and Green Street Housing LLC have agreed to amend the original LDA, in its entirety, as more particularly set forth in the amended and restated land disposition agreement attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit A to provide the rights and obligations of the city and Green Street Housing LLC with respect to the following: Green Street Housing LLC purchase of the property as described in the amended LDA; the city's lease of all that certain real property owned by the city and identified as 501 Willow Street, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, consisting of 14,487 square feet to Green Street Housing LLC to improve the parcel for the use of parking for the property; and such other matters relating to Green Street Housing LLC's purchase, lease, and redevelopment of the property, subject to the terms and conditions contained in the amended LDA. And whereas by this resolution, the council hereby authorizes the amended LDA and hereby authorizes the mayor's execution thereof on behalf of the city. And whereas upon the mayor's execution of the amended LDA on behalf of the city as authorized hereunder, all of the terms set forth in the amended LDA shall be deemed and otherwise construed to supersede and replace in its entirety the original LDA.
Thank you, Ms. Glantz. Questions or comments on the resolution?
It's been a long time that, you know, obviously this property's been surplus for almost eight years. And I know that a few years ago, when the council, they came, but it didn't go forward. Now, we're finally getting through. It's been a long time coming. Glad to see it's being done.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of Resolution Number 3167, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Resolution Number 3167 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Okay. Got a large agenda tonight. Wow. Got to figure out which page I'm on. Okay. I think I've got it. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2715 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Boda? Good evening, Ms. Beauchesne.
Good evening. Ordinance Number 2... Are you ready? This ordinance Number 2715 is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2022 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's training account. This is second reading. There's been no changes or amendments.
Thank you, Ms. Beauchesne. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2715 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2715 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2716 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I'll give it to Mr. Boda this time and Ms. Jackson. It was a tie.
Ordinance Number 2716, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Section 17.04.040 of the Salisbury City Code entitled "Method of Regulation" to add confirmatory language exempting federal, state, and local governments from Title 17 of the Salisbury City Code. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of Title 17 zoning of the City Code of the City of Salisbury demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to keep the provisions of Title 17 current, comply with present community standards and values, and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, the public general or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality and to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of its citizens. Whereas the mayor and council may amend Title 17 of the Salisbury City Code pursuant to the authority granted in Maryland Code Land Use Section 4-102, subject to the provisions set forth in Section 17.228.020 of the Salisbury City Code. Whereas it is widely accepted in Maryland that a local government, when it owns, leases, or otherwise controls property in that locality and puts a property to public use, is not subject to its own zoning laws absent an explicit legislative provision manifesting an intent that the local government be subject to those laws. Whereas the mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Section 17.04.040 of the Salisbury City Code to add confirmatory language that federal, state, and local governments are exempt from Title 17. Whereas pursuant to Section 17.228.020 of the Salisbury City Code, any amendment to the Salisbury zoning code requires the recommendation of the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission prior to the passage of an ordinance amending Chapter 17.04. Whereas a public hearing on the proposed amendment was held by the Planning Commission in accordance with the provisions of Section 17.228.020 of the Salisbury City Code on April 21, 2022. Whereas at the conclusion of its April 21, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended by a vote of five to zero that the amendment to Section 17.04.040 of the Salisbury City Code set forth herein be approved by mayor and council. Whereas the mayor and council have determined that the amendment to Section 17.04.040 of the Salisbury City Code shall now be adopted as set forth herein. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Title 17 of the Salisbury City Code is hereby amended by adding the bolded and underlying language and deleting the double-strike-through language as follows. In Section 1, by amending Section 17.04.040 of the Salisbury City Code entitled "Method of Regulation" as follows: The method to be used for carrying out legislative intent shall be by ordinance of the city council dividing the city into districts such as a number, shape, and area as may deem necessary to carry out the purposes of the grant of powers and striking out Article 66B, replacing with the land use article of the Annotated Code of Maryland to promote health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of the community. Within such districts, the city may regulate and restrict the erection of construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, or use of the building structures or land. All such regulations shall be in uniform for each class and kind of building throughout each district, but the regulations in one district may differ from those in other districts. The regulations herein are intended to carry out the mandate of the acts and articles expressed in the legislative authority above. And this is added. This title, Title 17, shall not apply to land buildings or other structures owned by or leased solely to the federal government, the state of Maryland, Wacomico County, or the City of Salisbury, provided that such land buildings or other structures are used for public purpose.
I'll give you a little break. Questions or comments from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2716 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordnance Number 2716 for the first reading passes by a vote of five to zero. I would like to announce that the public hearing for this text amendment will be held on May 23, 2022. Again, that's May 23, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2717 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake, Mrs. Jackson.
Ordinance Number 2717, ordinance of the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 5.52 of the City Code defining the definition of food service facility in lieu of restaurant and granting the city fire marshal the authority to enforce provisions of Chapter 5.52. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of the City Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to redefine which food service facility shall be licensed by the city pursuant to Chapter 5.52 of the Code. And whereas the City of Salisbury desires to grant the responsibility to enforce the requirements of Chapter 5.52 to the fire marshal. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury as follows: Section 1, Chapter 5.52 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Restaurant B is hereby amended by repealing the crossed-out language and adding the bolded, italicized, and underlined language as follows: Chapter 5.52, Restaurants will be stricken and replaced with Food Service Facility. 5.52.010, Definitions: For the purpose of this chapter, the following word shall be given the meanings indicated. Restaurant is now Food Service Facility, means any restaurant, café, public dining room, lunch counter. The following language is being added: cafeteria, bar, tavern, coffee shop, sandwich stand, bakery, grocery store, retail market, and like-food operations in industries, institutions, hospitals, clubs, catering kitchens, commissaries, or similar places in which food or drink is prepared for sale or for service on the premises or elsewhere, or in any other operation where food or drink is served or provided for the public with or without charge. The language is... The following language is stricken, or other place where food is sold for human consumption. Added: A food service facility does not include any daycare or educational occupancy as defined in NFPA 101 Life Safety Code 2018 Edition, or bona fide nonprofit civic or religious organizations that do not serve food or drink to the public more than three days per week. And going through from 5.52.020 through 5.52.040, restaurants are replaced with Food Services Facility. The other subsequent changes are to 5.52.050. Operation stricken is restaurant after revocation of and replaced with a Food Service Facility without a valid license. We'll go on to read misdemeanor. A person who operates a food service facility without a valid license required under this chapter shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof shall be subject to a fine of not less than $200, nor more than $500 for each offense or imprisonment of not more than 90 days or both. The party aggrieved shall have the right to appeal as provided under the general laws of the state, where the act or omission is of a continuing nature, conviction for one of the offenses shall not bar conviction for continuation of the offense subsequent to the first or any succeeding conviction. Municipal infraction. A person who operates a food service facility without a valid license or otherwise violates any provision of this chapter shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $500 for each offense. Each day a violation continues shall be considered a separate offense. Nothing herein shall prevent the city from taking such other lawful action as it deems necessary to prevent or remedy any violation of the provisions of this chapter. And the fire marshal is authorized and designated by the council to authorize the persons within his or her department to act as enforcement officers for the purpose of enforcing this chapter. Going on to Sections 5.52.060 through 5.52.080, again, any reference to restaurant is stricken and replaced with Food Service Facility. And 5.52.090, Non-transferability. Restaurant is stricken and license is issued. It's now we're starting with the word license. An issued under this chapter shall be nontransferable.
Thank you. Would you like some water?
I'm gonna grab some, thank you.
Good. Any questions or comments?
So if Andy opens a bait shop, that doesn't count because it's not human food consumption, right?
A bait?
He's trying to get him a more time to drink.
Or a doggy ice cream shop, you know.
So don't do that. Okay. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2717 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance Number 2717 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2718 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
Ordinance Number 2718, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Chapter 2.32 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Purchases and Sales to increase the maximum dollar amount for direct purchases and the minimum dollar amount for formal competitive bidding in order to increase procurement efficiency in a market of increased cost. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the City of Salisbury's Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community and market standards and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of its citizens. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general local or public law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to inter alia assure that the good government of the municipality and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. And whereas pursuant to Section SC 16-1B of the city charter, the council by ordinance shall fix and from time to time may change the maximum amount of any such direct purchase, provided that such maximum authorized amount shall in no event exceed the maximum direct purchase amount set by ordinance of the council from time to time. And whereas the council finds that the health, safety, and convenience and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Chapter 2.32 of the Salisbury City Code to increase the maximum dollar amount for direct purchases and the minimum dollar amount for formal competitive bidding in order to increase procurement efficiency in a market of increased cost. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that the amendments of Chapter 2.32 of the Salisbury City Code set forth shall be adopted as set forth herein. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council of the City of Salisbury, that Chapter 2.32 of the Salisbury City Code is hereby amended as follows: Section 1, Section 2.32 of the City Code shall be amended by adding the bolded and underlying language and deleting the strike-through language below. So I'm gonna direct your attention by line item to where the changes are going to occur. Starting in Section 2.32.040, Direct Purchases, lines 35 and 36, taking out not in excess of $2,000 and replacing with less than $5,000. Moving forward to lines 43 through 44, striking out $2,000 and replacing with $5,000. In Section 2.32.050, looking at lines 49 through 52, we're striking out $25,000 or less and replacing with less than $50,000. That change is again found in line 52 and 53. Moving forward to lines 71 and 72, striking out $25,000 and replacing with $50,000. Lines 199... Lines 199 through 202, we're taking out, starting with, if the estimated value is taking out less than $25,000 and replacing with $5,000, but less than $50,000, the Director for Procurement shall instead of solicit, direct the solicitation of, and we're also adding an email in line 202. Going forward to line 205, it's now going to read, at least two written competitive bids shall be secured whenever possible when the estimated value is between $5,000 and $24,999, and at least three written competitive bids shall be secured whenever possible when the estimated value is between $25,000 and $49,999. And finally, going to Section 2.32.080, Disposition of Surplus Supplies, looking at lines 262 through 273, we are adding vehicles, taking out $2,000, replacing with $5,000, and adding the following language to close out this particular subsection, but in all cases shall adhere to the appropriate methods of disposition as established by the Director of Procurement. All surplus supplies disposition pursuant to this procedure shall be submitted to the Director of Procurement, and such record shall be in his or her office.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2718 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2718 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2719 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake.
Ordinance number 2719, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Title 8 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Health and Safety to add Section 08.07 to require a permit to remove certain trees from property within the city and to require replacement of trees or payment into a tree restoration fund. Whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the city of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury are authorized under Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances, not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, the public, general law or public, local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality to observe peace and order and to secure persons and property from damage and destruction and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council may amend Title 8 of the Salisbury City Code pursuant to the authority granted in SC 2-15 of the charter. Whereas recognizing the city's status as a Tree City USA City, the purpose of this ordinance is to establish policies, regulations, and standards necessary to ensure that the city will continue to realize the benefits provided by its urban forest. Whereas the mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Title 8 of the Salisbury City Code to require a permit to remove certain trees within the city and to require replacement of such trees or payment into a tree restoration fund. Whereas the mayor and council have determined that the amendments to Title 8 of the city code shall be adopted as set forth herein. Now therefore, being enacted and ordained by the council, that Title 8 of the Salisbury City Code is hereby amended, amended, excuse me, by adding the bolded and underlined language as followed. Section 1, Title 8 of the Salisbury City Code shall be entitled Health and Safety is amended by adding Chapter 08.07 as follows. And this is all brand new, so I'm gonna read it all into the record. Chapter 08.07, Tree Removal Permit, 08.07.10, Purpose: Recognizing the Salisbury status as a Tree City USA City, the purpose of this chapter is to establish policies, regulations, and standards necessary to ensure that the city will continue to realize the benefits provided by its urban forest. 08.07.020, Scope: Nothing contained in this chapter shall be deemed to impose any liability or duty upon the city, its officers, or employees, nor to relieve any owner of private property from any duty to keep a tree, shrub, or plant under control, and in such condition as to prevent it from constituting a hazard or impediment to travel or vision upon any street park, boulevard, alley, or public space within the city. 08.07.030, Definitions: Diameter at breast height, DBH, means the diameter and inches of the tree measured at four feet above the existing grade. Tree Replacement Fund means a city fund established for the maintenance, preservation, and planting of trees within the city. 08.07.040, Tree Removal Permit, A, Required: The removal or relocation of any tree with a DBH of 12 inches or greater on any property without first obtaining a tree removal permit shall be prohibited. B, Application: Permit shall be obtained by submitting a tree removal permit application in a form provided by the Housing and Community Development Department, which shall include the following information. One, the owner and or occupant of the land on which the tree is located; and two, a description of each tree to be removed and the location thereof. C, Fee: There should be no fee for the permit application. D, Review Procedures: The Housing and Community Development Department shall review all applications for tree removal permits. The Housing and Community Development Department may impose such conditions on a manner and extent of the proposed tree removal as are necessary to ensure that the proposed tree removal will be conducted in such a manner as to cause at least, to cause the least possible damage, encroachment, or interference with natural resources and natural process within the affected area. E, If a tree removal service or company is hired to perform tree removal, the removal service or company shall be responsible for applying for or receiving the tree removal permit. If a tree removal service or company is not utilized, the property owner or tenant shall be responsible for applying for or receiving the tree removal permit. 08.07.050, Exemptions: A, Upon presentation of proof, removal of the following does not require a true removal permit. One, a tree that is dead or dying. Two, a tree that is diseased. Three, a species of tree that has been identified as being infected with a contagious threatening disease or ingested with a pest. Or four, a tree that presents a hazardous or dangerous condition requiring immediate action for the safety of structures or human life. B, Proof of an exemption shall be provided to the Housing and Community Development Department prior to removal of the tree or in a case of emergency at the earliest opportunity after the tree is removed. C, The Housing and Community Development Department shall confirm the removal of the tree is exempt, or sorry, shall confirm that the removal of the tree is exempt and does not require a tree removal permit. If the Housing and Community Development Department determines that a tree is not exempt, the provisions of this chapter shall apply, including the penalty set forth in 08.07.080. D, Nothing in this chapter shall prohibit the immediate removal of a tree which presents a hazardous or dangerous condition, and such circumstances, the Housing and Community Development Department shall be notified within 48 hours of the removal of the tree. 08.07.060, Replacement of Trees, Payment to Tree Replacement Fund, A. Whenever a tree removal permit is issued for the removal of a tree, each tree shall be relocated or replaced by the applicant. The replacement tree shall be located on the same parcel of land from which the tree was removed. B, Where tree location or replacement is not possible on the same property, the applicant shall pay monies into the Tree Replacement Fund. All some payable to the Tree Replacement Fund shall be paid prior to the issuance of a tree removal permit. See exemptions: Trees subject to a forest conservation plan authorized by, under the Forest Conservation Act shall not be subject to the provisions of 08.07.060 and need not be replaced. Any applicant claiming this exemption shall provide documentation verifying their participation in approved forest conservation plan. Two trees located within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay District shall not be subject to the provisions of 08.07.060 and need not be replaced. All applicants claiming this exemption shall provide documentation verifying that the property for which the tree removal permits would be sought is located within the Critical Area District as established in Chapter 12.20. 08.07.070, Tree Replacement Fund, A, Tree Replacement Fund is intended to provide for the off-site replacement of trees and compensate for the loss of trees due to development, construction, and inadequate safeguards during construction. This fund is to be used for the planting of trees in public areas. B, The amount payable to the Tree Restoration Fund per tree shall be set by the city council from time to time. The amount set forth by the city council shall include the reasonable costs incurred by the city in planting appropriate replacement trees on public property and otherwise maintaining this program. The Tree Replacement Fund shall be administered by the Department of Field Operations. 08.07.080, Responsibility of Enforcement: Compliance with this chapter shall be enforced by the Housing and Community Development Department. 08.07.090, Violations and Penalties: A, Any person violating the provisions of this chapter shall be guilty of municipal infraction and shall be subject to a fine not to exceed $500 per offense. B, Each tree removed in violation of this chapter shall be considered a separate offense. C, The city may issue a stop order or withhold issuance of a certificate of occupancy, permits, or other inspections until the conditions of this chapter are met. Failure to obey by a stop work order shall constitute a violation of this chapter.
Thank you.
God.
Oh, sorry. Any questions or comments?
I have some.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
You wanna go first, April?
Go.
I'll yield too. A couple things. One, I think in here, it didn't say 125. I know it said that a fee set by council, but when we were reading, or when Nate was presenting to us, I think, a week ago or something, it was $125 into the tree fund. I see the language in here now saying set by council from time to time. It's a little vague for me, that's one. Number two, I'm a little concerned in regards to that the Housing and Community Development, well, I asked Nate directly if this would impact the workload of anyone in Housing, Community, and Development, and he had responded, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's on record that, no, that would be no extra, you know, workload. But that same department requested a significant amount of staff for the budget. So also, just, I just wanna put this out there, I think in one hand, we're gonna be asking for this tree legislation, which is not a bad, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, and I'm not saying that we as a city can't find a way to keep our tree canopy high and really, you know, work with all of that. But I am saying that we are right in the middle of looking at the budget, and if we have to raise, whatever we have to raise other fees, I think adding a tree fee on right now, plus the actual internal operation of it, keeping track of it, who's going out there to do it, who's issuing the permits, who's making sure, that does take time, it's another whole program in that. And those are the things that concern me with this. And I have, and several people have come up to me and talked to me about how can anyone tell them what to do on their own property? So as far as planting, as far as where they want to plant, I'm just, I'm just saying, well, it is their property, I mean, if it's laughable or not, it is somebody's property. So those are just some of the general comments I have about it. I didn't know if anybody else had any other thoughts about this since it was initially presented.
I'm wondering if a developer comes in and develops some land, what is he gonna be charged? Is he gonna be charged for, okay, if he's in a wooded area, is he gonna be charged for every tree that he cuts down?
Do you like an answer to that?
Is that on wood?
No, it's unrelated.
It's unrelated?
Yeah, that's managed through the development approval process, and they have to develop forests, what is it?
Conservation.
Forest conservation plans. So it's a different process, and there are fees associated with that, but that's already in the law.
When they, part of the, when it comes before the planning commission, there's a plan that has to be included, and one of them is the forest conservation plan, to make sure that the tree canopy is maintained.
So those are, those trees are already addressed, when development is associated, those trees are already addressed under the law. The only things not addressed are the trees that would be addressed through this, which are not connected to development. This is not connected to development.
And also, we talked a great deal about HOAs with this, and I don't hear any language with HOAs in this, in this at all. And we had a great, a big conversation about HOAs when this was initially presented. So there's several things about this on the heels of the budget that I have concerns with.
And I do have some concerns too with the fees, because as Angela has said, with the budget, and us not knowing what we're gonna have to do, I don't want to infringe something on the residents that right now we can hold back. Because right now, we're, in a way, so, I don't want to cause no more pressure for our constituents at all, no more. So I'm just like, I'm just not, right now, I don't think this is what we should do. I know we're a tree city, I know we accepted this, but I just, I don't think this is the time for this.
For myself, my concern is someone who, for instance, in my case, we have over 20 trees on our property, and I have had to remove a couple because they were diseased, unfortunately. And one to put in a wheelchair ramp, and one because it was just a very messy tree. My backyard smelled like a winery certain times of the year because of the berries. But I'm concerned, if someone doesn't have room to replace a tree, if they're taking a tree out because it is taking up more space, if it wasn't planted in a proper manner in the first place, if they've got so many trees on their property per however many square feet the lot is, and it's not a good idea to plant more trees, they're gonna be forced to pay this fee to replant a tree. And that's, that's something that I am concerned about, the fees, the amount that we're gonna be asking people to pay for this. So I don't know if we've come up with a different number for that or what, but I think that's gonna be the big sticking point, is the fee amount.
Can you propose a fee amount? I mean, first of all, I'd ask two questions. One, can you identify any property in Salisbury where there would not be enough room? And could you, could you pull that up on a map and share that with everyone? Could you identify a property where there?
I live.
Could you, I mean, I think, I think you'd actually be hard-pressed to prove that a tree could not fit on a property. So that's item one, and we can, we can do the analysis of, you know, of a site, I mean, I'm happy to do that. I mean, again, there's, I don't think there's any such property that exists, except for in the downtown, maybe, where you have 100% full lot coverage of a building.
That's what I'm asking, are we gonna be taking that sort of area into consideration?
Well, they don't, they don't have trees on it. And the second, so none of those properties have trees on them where they have full lot coverage. And the second question would be, is there an amount that you think would be appropriate in those rare circumstances where someone couldn't replace a tree?
I mean, I know that there are gonna be, I don't know what the costs for replanting are gonna be for the city, but I know I can go to...
The city can get its trees for free through DNR, though, and we do.
Okay. So you're saying the whole cost is the cost of what it takes for the staff to go plant the tree?
It's a time cost, not a, not a real cost.
Right.
But yes.
So that's $125? Would you allow that individual to, instead of paying, in lieu of paying the fee, would you allow that individual to do the planting if the city tells them this is where it needs to go, we'll mark the spot?
We've done lots of community plannings, I think we could absolutely do that, and we've even guided that process before with, city staff has guided the process of the plantings. So I think that's...
In lieu of doing the payment, they could do that instead, do that.
Is there, is there an amendment that would be needed to this to clarify that? There might be.
I think there's several things that need to be clarified. I mean, honestly, Mayor Day, we're looking at the Housing, Community Development doing this, right? And Nate said, no, I just wanna make clear of this, we're in the middle of this budget hearing. I asked him purposefully, this is another whole layer of permitting and whole nother process, a whole nother tracking, it wasn't gonna cause any extra work for anybody. Now...
That's not, that's not accurate at all.
Well, that's what he said.
Councilman Blake...
I'm going by what he's saying.
I think what he said was that they were willing to take on the extra work. Obviously, there is paper, there's reviewing things, but it is manageable within their workload that exists today.
And on top of that, you know, I think it's important that we be clear about the limits of consideration here are not which department can do that work, I mean, that's, that's an administrative function, that's something we'll decide of who will execute.
Well, you can decide that, but then the department can't come back and ask for all this extra...
We have no, we have no additional employee requests.
The administration did not put forth those recommendations.
Okay. Great. And I think the other thing is too, I... And I, and I think the other thing is too, I think telling people that they have to plant a tree on their property if they don't want a tree, it's a bit, a bit overstepping.
Which is why there's an alternative. But, but I think it's worth pointing out, I, I would encourage you to read our zoning code and our property maintenance code. We tell people everything that they can and cannot do on their property, as does every jurisdiction in America. Whether or not you disagree with that, I mean, that, that's really a fundamental, well, I'm looking at the libertarian in the room, or the, one of the libertarians in the room, perhaps, but whether, whether or not, whether or not government has those rights is, you know, is well adjudicated in the law. I mean, we, we do have this, right? There are, you know, thousands of municipalities that have this exact law, and those are places that have said, we are going to put our money where our mouth is in terms of our environmental ethics and responsibilities. Whether or not Salisbury joins them is what's up for debate.
I understand, I understand that you have that right, because if you didn't, we'd probably be in chaos. But what I'm saying is, right now, I don't think this is the appropriate thing to do right now. I just don't. We have bigger fish to fry than this.
I think making a third option for them, for folks to avoid having to pay the fee, if they have the time to be able to put into it, I think that would be a good middle point.
Well, I, I just, if I may, if I may, I'm a little taken back since we had consensus to move this forward without the questions, so, that's sort of, excuse me, I'm just saying that we had consensus, and it appears now that we have no consensus. So, that, that, that's the reason we have work sessions.
I've never seen that.
Excuse me, Mr. President, may I ask you?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, I did have questions, and I did ask questions, and the second thing is, it does read a little bit different than what I believed it presented to.
And, and I, like, those points, you're, it's a valid thing to bring up, absolutely.
Yeah, and I do feel like...
So, if the rate changed, that's an issue.
Right, and it doesn't specify the rate, and I think it's, you know, that the council can decide what the rate is at, you know, from time to time, but the rate was presented at $125.
Was that?
And, and the way, the way all fees are set, every fee, every year, the from time to time is through the fee schedule, every year.
And that's fantastic, but once again, the language and some of the points that were read here tonight seem to be a little different than what was presented just a week ago.
There were no changes. Ms. Blake, the only change was we added the exemption for the critical areas. There was never proposed fee in the ordinance. It was always going to be established through the fee structure, and that was just, they were proposing what it was going to be in that fee structure. It was never in the ordinance.
Fee structure is a separate document.
So, where did the $125 price tag of the tree come from?
I don't know.
I believe that was in the summary, that was, you are correct, that was presented, but it was not part of the ordinance. It was always outside of the ordinance.
We have, we have the ability to address that during the fee schedule.
Correct.
In the budget.
Counsel can change, but, you know, if I'm hearing the change in consensus, I, I think there's a number of items that are going to require further consideration. You know, it might be wise to table this.
That's, that was my, that was going to be my next move is to table...
And come back with a full list, if we can get, if the administration can get a full list of what the topics of concern and questions are, and so that we can, you know, come up with alternatives for each of those, I think that'd be, lead to a more constructive discussion.
Do I have a motion to table this ordinance?
So moved.
Ms. Blake table, made a motion to table ordinance numbers 2719 for the first reading, and it was seconded by Ms. Jackson. I'll call the vote on the table. Motion 2719 for the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And the chair votes nay. Ordinance number 2719 is tabled by a vote of three to two. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2720 for the first reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Ordinance number 2720, ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending section 15.22 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Vacant Buildings to require registration of vacant lots and payments of annual fees, whereas the ongoing application, administration, enforcement of the City Code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values, and to promote the public safety, health, and welfare of its citizens, whereas the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury are authorized under Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5-202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, the public general law, or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, and to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of its citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council may amend section 15.22 of the Buildings and Construction Title of the Salisbury City Code pursuant to the authority granted in SC 2-15 of the Charter. Whereas the purpose of section 15.2, 15.22 of the Buildings and Construction Title of the Salisbury Code is to protect the public health and safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Salisbury, and to assist the city government in monitoring the number of vacant properties in the city, to assess the effects of the condition of those properties on nearby businesses and neighborhoods in which they are located, particularly in light of fire safety hazards and unlawful temporary occupants by transients, including illicit drug users and traffickers, and to promote substantial efforts to rehabilitate such vacant properties. And whereas the mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city would be furthered by amending section 15.22 of the Code to require the registration of vacant lots and payment of annual fees. And whereas the mayor and council have determined the amendments to section 15.22 of the Salisbury City Code shall be adopted as set forth herein, now therefore being enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury, the section 15.22 of the Buildings and Construction Title of the Salisbury City Code is hereby amended by adding the bolded and underlined language and deleting the strike-through language as follows. Section 1, section 15.22 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Vacant Buildings is amended as follows. Section 15.22.010, scope, the provisions of this chapter govern buildings, we're adding in lots, already existing, located within the City of Salisbury, adding with the exception that the provisions of this chapter shall not apply to lots located within residential Moving forward to 15.22.02, purpose, line 47, we're striking out buildings, adding That changes also on line 50 and 51. To section 15.2.030, definitions, adding the definition of, adding the definition of building, which means a structure of any kind constructed for shelter, support, or enclosure of persons, animals, chattels, or operations. Adding the definition of lot, which means an unimproved individual parcel of real property. Lot shall not include unimproved real property which has ongoing permitted construction. And to the definition of vacant, we are adding the following language, with respect to lots, vacant means unimproved by an assessed building. Section 15.22.040, vacant, striking out the word property, I'm sorry, striking out the word building and replacing with property, so that it's now going to read, for section A, applicability, the requirements of the section shall be applicable to each owner of a building or lot, that language is added, or lot. For section B, registration, it's now going to read, each such owner of a vacant building, again, adding or lot, shall file a registration form, adding and pay an annual fee with the Housing and Community Development Department, adding each year. The registration form shall include the street address of each such vacant building, adding or lot, the names and addresses of all owners as hereinafter described, and any other information deemed necessary by the director. The registration, adding an annual, already existing fees are required by section, subsection C, shall be billed by the Housing and Community Development Department and shall be paid by replacing June with August of each year. Going forward to lines 109, this is still under the same subsection, we're going to section C, registration, adding an annual fees, the, so it will now read, the registration and annual fees of a vacant building and lots shall be set by city council from time to time. The registration fee shall be paid once at the time the property is registered. The annual fee is reoccurring fee for each year until such time as the property is no longer vacant. Adding subsection D, inspection, all vacant buildings that remain on the vacant property registry for more than one fiscal year shall be subject to an annual inspection. This annual inspection shall consist of both an internal and external inspection of any structures located on the property. The fee for this annual inspection shall be established by city council from time to time. Section 15.22.050, transfer, again, in line 121, we are adding the phrase or lot. Section 15.22.060, which is the failure to register, we're changing that subsection to add or pay annual fee, so that now A will read, failure to timely register a vacant building or lot, pay annual or registration fee, notify the director of a transfer of a vacant building or lot, or transfer a registration pursuant to this chapter shall result in a violation in accordance with section 15.22.090 of this chapter. Those are all the changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I do have one. So, you're, on line 39 and 40, you, on those lines, it says, the exemption that the provision of the chapter shall not apply to lots located within residential districts. So, I want to get a full understanding of that.
I take it as, so, my neighbor had a, had a lot between our house, well-maintained, well-cared-for, and it was kind of like their side yard, but it was a separate lot. I don't think that would apply.
Okay.
But they've built a house on it since then, but when we moved there...
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I just wanted to make sure that I had that same understanding. Now, what I want to know is if a person has just a lot of land that is not being developed, they have to register that lot?
If it's not in use.
So, that's what I'm saying.
Now...
That land is just there, not being used, hasn't been developed, it's just there in the city. It has to be registered.
Mr. Mayor, can you clarify?
Yeah, on, on the lot, but the lot fee is, let's pull that up, give me one second. It's not, it's not treated the same as a vacant building. Those are, those are treated differently. Give me one second.
This is changing that, though, on the commercial, right? Because you're now saying vacant property, not vacant building or vacant lot.
No, because the application of the fee, the, the primary fee is applied to the value of the vacant building. That's, that's where, that's where they get hit, sitting on vacant buildings, and with all the consequences that has for, you know, our police officers, our firefighters, et cetera, that's, that's what we're, and...
That's already in the code.
This is, however, getting more aggressive about those who have long sat on these, you know, dilapidated vacant structures that are, that we get calls about.
That's what you're actually speaking about.
Yes, lots are included, but it's a, I'm sorry, I'm sorry that I don't have that fee. Perhaps I don't have that in front of me because it's, it's not in here. Okay, that's in the fee ordinance. So, there is a question there of whether or not we want to apply any fee to a lot, which is an open question.
I don't think we should, I really, I don't. I'm more concerned, and I know that you're saying because there could be a lot that's a mess, I understand that, but don't we have...
We do.
Doesn't state...
Pro, pro, we do. Property maintenance code...
Does the taxation have that record?
Well, yeah, but...
Of the land that is owned by whoever?
But also, property maintenance code affords us the power to make sure that they take care of it. So, that's already in, so, we don't need, we don't necessarily need a lot fee.
I don't think we should. I really don't. Now, as far as vacant houses, I'm all for that.
Yeah, that, that's the focus. That is the, that is the focus.
I'm all for that, 100%, because I feel like there's, I, I see so many vacant and abandoned buildings and houses in my community, and I, and it's an eyesore. But when we come to lots, that's something different. I just don't think we should.
What I'd suggest, and you can correct me, Ashley, but what I'd suggest is that at the time of the adoption of the fee schedule, set, set that, or zero out any lot fee.
The other, the other thing that, that goes along with that is there are quite a few people in the city that have a, that own two lots, a lot with the house on it, and a lot next to it.
Well, this exempts all residential lots, like that. But what this does is, commercial lots, non-residential vacant lots, there is a $500 per year fee. Now, that could be zeroed out if you're concerned that in areas for businesses, commercial areas, if we don't want the lot to be charged a fee, that could be zeroed out.
I am looking at the fee schedule, and I don't see, it doesn't say lot, just vacant building.
It's in, it's in...
I'm concerned about the...
Let's do it one at a time.
Residential.
You can be heard. But, hey, April.
I'm concerned about the residential and the lots, more so than I'm, because the commercial, they, they should be responsible as, as much as, as possible, but I'm concerned about the people with the vacant buildings and not being fee for their lots.
So, the value of the $500, the, the value meaning in terms of what it produces, in terms of $500 vacant, non-residential lot registration, is purely oriented on trying to prohibit land banking, sitting on property in commercial districts of the city, and not doing anything with it. Now, it's not a huge dissuading factor, but it's, it is a fee. The, the same is true of trying to dissuade people from sitting on vacant houses and vacant businesses through the residential and non-residential fees about, that are about assessed value or year's vacancy on the residential. But this also exempts all those residential lots. So, residential lots have, are not included in this at all.
One, one question I have is that there is, there are some commercial lots where the, the operation of the business has a lot, they also own the lot next to it, and they park, they wouldn't be there during the day, but they park vehicles on it. I would consider that to be in use, right?
Perhaps, so, perhaps one thing we need is a, a definition of use versus vacancy.
And we can do that between now and the second reading.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes, I will take care of that.
Okay. Any other?
That, that sums it for me, too.
Okay.
Just verify the definition.
That's all the questions. I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2720 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordin... What?
You up on...
Oh, I thought you were...
Four.
Ordinance number 2720 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero.